Good evening. If I may have your attention, I would like to call to order the City Council study session for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 5th, 2016. Thank you all for being here. Let's see. Do we need to note who's here? I guess all the councils here except Janice Hoppy at this time, so we will get going. Mr. Goff, do we have any staff reports?
We don't this evening, but I think we can start with our update from our Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Terrific. Would you like to come and make your presentation?
Hello. My name is Amy DePierre, and I am presenting to you today with my co-chair, Joy Op, to provide a midpoint progress update for the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee. You'll actually hear us refer to the committee as RESC throughout the presentation. First, we'd like to thank you, council, for allowing us to present the important work RESC has done so far. We extend our greetings to all of you and a warm welcome to Mayor Starker and Councilwoman Dozeman, who are new to council since our presentation last September. The presentation will run about 15 minutes, and we'll have time for questions at the end. So as you most remember to do this, we didn't scroll last time, but now we have a clicker. So as you most likely already know, RESC is a group of Wheat Ridge residents who applied and were then appointed to this committee by Mayor Jay based on their experience and expertise with environmental sustainability. We began meeting as a committee in June of 2017, and since then, we've continued to meet every other week. Our main objective is to develop an environmental sustainability plan for Wheat Ridge with regard to six topic areas. These areas include communication and engagement, renewable energy, solid waste and recycling, water transportation, and green building and energy efficiency. For each of these, we are in the process of drafting a plan that contains our identified overall goals for the targeted topic area. We will address these high-level goals here during our presentation today. And in addition to the overall goals, the plan will include specific strategies regarding how to reach them. So while we will share a bit of our future direction with you today, please know that our committee is still in the process of refining the details on those. This slide offers insight into how we've structured our committee's meetings and time. During Phase 1, which we presented in detail to you in September, our work was to gain historical understanding and learn about the current state of sustainability in Wheat Ridge. We accomplished this by meeting and interviewing community members, city officials, and topical experts, as well as identifying pertinent readings and other helpful resources. After our September presentation, we moved into what is listed here as Phase 2. In order to maximize the time spent within each topic area, we elected to divide into small working groups to create a draft plan for the topic area that was then shared with and responded to by the whole committee. We set aside four meetings for each topic area. The first meeting was to address background and importance. The second and third meetings to draft and edit the goals and strategies. And then during our fourth and final topic area meeting, we reviewed the working group draft as a full group for edits and consensus. As you may imagine, with a task of this size, a lot of work has been happening outside of our meeting times. You'll also note, in Phase 3, we've allowed time for the entire committee to collaborate, expand, edit, and review the draft plan in order to finalize the recommendations we will present to you in June. And at this time, we'd also like to mention the need to determine future support for the proposed action plan implementation, as well as the future, if any, of RESC beyond June of 2018 when our committee term is over. And I have a blank page here. For progress to date, in addition to our draft plan, we have also been able to accomplish a few other items as well. We've only put two events that RESC members have attended, but I think if you looked at any one of our individual calendars, you'll see the commitment and dedication we have to continuing conversation around our targeted areas. We've also built out the RESC pages on the city website. We've been published in the local publications and have begun regular social media outreach. We were very thrilled by Mayor Starker's letter in support of Excel's plan to further its renewable energy mission, so thank you for that, Mayor Starker. And we also recently applied to Excel's Partners in Energy program. And we learned as well in December, in its first month of use, the Clear Intentions Glass Recycling Facility collected 277 pounds of glass, which we believe is a great beginning. So now that we've filled you in on our process, we turn our attention to each of the topic areas. First up is communication and engagement. We feel strongly that engaging the community is a fundamental step to further our mission. We've all heard it said that knowing is half the battle, and that's why this is such a key component to support the goals, strategies, and initiatives of each of the other five topic areas. Building out the website was a critical first step to share information and engage the community around these important issues. Social media, local articles, talking with our neighbors about how to lessen our environmental impacts can quickly gain traction to support and then exceed our goals. I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide. Truly, we believe that the combined work of the Wheat Ridge residents, businesses, and the city will be what builds a more sustainable community and improves our quality of life. Communication with the community and activating people toward common goals happens through a variety of outlets. It can happen online via the website, email, or social media, through the mail, print sources, or often in person. We have identified some existing programs that we consider to be valuable to our mission. The Sustainable Neighborhood Program allows for small neighborhood groups to set their goals and activate their neighbors on any topic that they feel strongly about. There are also already a number of local groups operating in Wheat Ridge that we feel it would be good to explore how to solidify our relationship with and then work together to set common goals. Along with engaging community members, the RESC sees an equally important role coming from local businesses. One proposed recommendation is that a green business award be given annually by council to a high-performing sustainable business. We hope that the action plan we create will be widely shared with local businesses to encourage their participation. We would love to see local businesses duplicating the message of the city by identifying their own sustainability plans. We believe strengthening the ongoing relationships between local businesses and the city will serve to support each other's efforts around environmental sustainability and bring the residents into it as well. I'll now turn the podium over to my co-chair, and she'll close out our presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, council. I'll be sharing with you the goals and the action items for the remaining five topic areas, beginning with renewable energy. In discussing renewable energy, we're talking about the source of the energy used within our community. The benefits of increasing our global reliance on renewable energy are numerous, not just clean air and healthy people and animals, but also good local jobs with more money staying in our local economy. It can also give us a cheaper and more stable energy cost for our homes, businesses, and city facilities. In talking about a small community like Wheat Ridge, whose residences are primarily reliant on a single provider for energy, there are small but important contributions that we can make to a global effort toward cleaner renewable energy sources. The Renewable Energy Team has identified several goals that we encourage the city to work with neighboring communities to support renewable energy efforts at the state and federal level. The RESC also supports the adaptation of codes and ordinances that encourage onsite renewable energy generation. There's a growing movement for communities to commit to moving closer to the goal of receiving 100% of their energy from renewable sources by 2050. The RESC encourages the city of Wheat Ridge to also make this commitment through partnerships with Excel and others, such as the Colorado Energy Office, the Department of Local Affairs, and the National Renewable Energy Lab in Golden, as well as moving toward independent sources of renewables. The Colorado Energy Plan was recently discussed at the PUC hearing last week and proposes to take a portion of Excel's renewable energy portfolio to 55% of total energy by 2040. As we mentioned earlier, Mayor Starker has submitted a letter in support of Excel's plans to further its renewable energy mission. We have also completed an application to Excel's Partners in Energy program. Additionally, we will recommend renewable energy financing options for city facilities, residences, and businesses, including programs offered by the Colorado Energy Office, bulk purchase arrangements, and community solar gardens. Many of these financing options have no cost for the city. The city should choose, could choose, to incentivize renewable energy. The financing options will require messaging commitment along with communication efforts. Water is a vital natural resource for Wheat Ridge residents, both in terms of quality and quantity. We have considered the quality of clean drinking water and usable safe natural water bodies, as well as ensuring enough water is available to drink and use for recreation and wildlife purposes. While water issues tend to have regional watershed-scale solutions, Wheat Ridge can also implement local solutions to improve community member quality of life and our vital natural systems. Given the regional context of efforts to improve water quality and conservation, our first recommendation is for the city to participate in state land use and water trainings, catered to Colorado conditions, and based on the Colorado Water Plan. Water-saving lessons learned should then be incorporated in a variety of land use planning efforts. A solid regulatory and incentive framework for water conservation will ensure we do our part to preserve Colorado's most vital natural resource. In addition, a solid first step in improving the quality of Wheat Ridge's water bodies is to have a better understanding of water quality. We recommend a volunteer effort to routinely monitor and report the water quality of Wheat Ridge's important water bodies, especially at the beginning, at the end of Clear Creek segments, and the city's lakes. To support these recommendations, the RESC supports community education around best practice initiatives, and would like to see the city take a more assertive role in improving the water quality in Clear Creek. Currently, the diversified approach to waste management, where each resident selects their own waste hauler, is not sustainable. It negatively impacts the environment and roadways, including air quality, noise pollution, and potential human health. Additionally, it may not actually save money for residents. We do recognize that this is a contentious issue to our community, and we do not expect overnight changes. Our initial look indicates there are only four residential waste haulers operating in the city. We created an inventory, and the costs are similar for each hauler. This committee is working on recommendations to reduce costs, as well as impacts from truck traffic and overlapping routes. Our action plan for solid waste and recycling includes building an inventory and comparative data set of residential trash and recycling haulers servicing Wheat Ridge residents. This information can be used to update the city's website and be made available to residents through other appropriate outlets. We're drafting recommendations that include strategies for diverting waste from landfills, reducing environmental impacts from having multiple waste haulers with overlapping service routes, and bolstering the city's municipal code regarding solid waste management. The goals and strategies that we are drafting include short-term, low-cost strategies, as well as long-term, higher-investment strategies. RESC is also working to develop fact sheets and educational materials aimed at supporting residences and businesses to better manage waste streams. We include information on composting and smart consumer tips. Our plan is to present residential and commercial best practices, including policy to define waste management in the city. We support the implementation of basic ordinances that trash haulers in Wheat Ridge follow. The next two topic areas, transportation and green building and energy efficiency, are topic areas that will be addressed in the coming weeks. As we said, our committee has divided into small groups and are tackling two topic areas at a time. These next two topic areas are included in the next phase of our work. Transportation is defined as the movement of goods and people, whether residents or visitors, from place to place, private and public, vehicular or active means. Green building or sustainable design is essentially the practice of increasing the efficiency of how buildings and their sites use energy, water, and materials to reduce impacts on health and the environment. Our recommended goals and strategies in the green building and energy efficiency topic area and the transportation topic area will be addressed at our final presentation in June. Our intention in June is to present an action plan that can be accepted and implemented. Input from council is important. We have included all our contact information, so if there is an area that you would like to be more involved in, please, we welcome working with you. If you haven't yet, take a look at the RESC portion of the city's website for useful links and great community resources. As Amy stated earlier, council will need to determine its future support of the proposed action plan implementation, as well as the future of RESC beyond June when our committee term is over. As the committee co-chairs, Amy and I would like to recognize the incredible efforts of all of the committee members. Their knowledge, their passion, and dedication has been the foundation for the tremendous forward progress of this group. Thank you so much, team. And thank you tonight, council. At this time, we're eager for your feedback, and if there are any questions, the team leads would be happy to step up and answer.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Op and Ms. DePierre, for a great presentation, and all the members of the committee. Do we have questions from council for the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee? Mr. Pond?
I may not have a question. I might, but I want to, first, I want to apologize for missing the session in September. It was on business. But thank you so much for all the work. This is a tremendous amount of work and passion and organization and preparedness and everything, and it's really nice to see that in everything that you've done, and I think it's really important. So I just want to, you know, extend my continued support for this, the way it's organized. Obviously, the feedback that you received in September has continued to keep you going. And just, you know, note, and this will serve as my elected officials' report as well, but, you know, I came back from the Smart Cities Conference, Smart Growth Conference in San Francisco. I went through the climate and resiliency track. I have a ton of information I'd love to probably push to you guys from that and resources for everyone. And just to kind of put a, just one spin on this, the water and the energy systems, I know there's a lot of global and regional aspects to that, but frankly, there's, you know, a lot of this is local, a lot of this is about us having resources for our kids and for future generations here, even for ourselves, when you think about some of the problems that we have with some of these things. Are we resilient? You know, I think we can be much more so, and I love that. I'm thrilled that you put the water quality piece in, the Clear Creek. I think that's essential, so I could go on, and I'm not going to, just thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to ask a question to Joy, I think. Recognizing that this is really not part of your charge, but in talking about solar energy, did you guys by any chance look at the code to see if there are any areas of conflict?
If I could, if I could just get you to move to the mic, then we'll get it all on tape.
We have not perused the code itself.
Well, that's a good question. Let's see.
Certainly. My name's Robert Robinson. The answer is no, we have not perused the details of the code.
Thank you.
Eric Wilson, one thing I'll just add is that in conversations with some of the city staff, including Steve Art, one idea that came up is if there's areas of code that could be streamlined in order to make permitting for solar easier, so that's one topic area that we'll be looking into further.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Ann?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much, because I know you guys dedicate, you said, every other week that you meet, so you're putting in a lot of time into this plan, so thank you. What I would like to see next go around when you come back is maybe a priority list of, you know, where we could start, or some things that maybe we could do that have a low impact cost, and then just kind of build it from there so that we can kind of look at that while we're making a decision, but thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Ms. Davis? Oh, would you like to respond to that?
Monica, I can comment on that real quickly. So the way that we're formatting the plan is in a grid form, which is very easy to follow, so it will have the low-hanging fruit, if you will, the easy-to-accomplish, low-cost. We would consider those to be high-priority items because they're easy, and it will be outlined in a form that can very easily be prioritized. So thank you for that feedback. That's excellent.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
And if I'm correct, you said that'll come back in June?
Yes, our final presentation is in June. Our term is up at the end of May, so whenever we get fit into the schedule in June is when we will present the entire action plan.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you all for your work, because it looks like a lot of work, and the presentation, which was awesome. And then I do, I look forward to the priority list and to the kind of summary in June as well, to see what we can do. So thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. As part of your work, when you're going to bring these plans to us, are you going to present any cost estimates for implementation?
Yes, the costs will be associated with each one of our action items.
And will they have benefits to cost ratio too, so we can?
Yeah, I mean, so we've gotten a loose understanding of the city's budget and an ability to do some general cost analysis. You know, digging deep into the, you know, the cost benefits might take a little time, but we will present cost estimates, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions? Actually, Mr. Urban beat you to it, so, oh, okay. Ms. Dozeman then.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough and succinct. I really just want to recognize that sustainability does start at a local level and with us as individuals, and I really appreciate, you know, us realizing that it's doing more with less, and that's going to sustain us into the future, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Mr. Urban? You're good, thank you. Okay. Do we have further questions?
Mr. Mayor, maybe before we end this agenda item, council did ask that we bring back some information about energy audits that the city has conducted over the past. There was a memo in your packet and a spreadsheet. Joyce Manwaring put that together. She's here to answer any questions. We don't have a really detailed presentation on this, but if you have questions, we would be happy to answer those. But we've had several audits done of municipal buildings over the past several years, and I think we have another one coming up for the Rec Center soon, and the recommendations were shown in your spreadsheet and which ones have been completed. But Joyce, do you have anything you want to add real quick?
No, I don't think so. I, you know, we tried to summarize the years that the energy audits were completed, and then a list, a list of tasks and what was implemented. We do have a five-year capital plan, and there's been some, for example, cost-benefit analysis of the Recreation Center specifically, because when we did the energy audit, the equipment there was still fairly new, had a long lifespan, so, you know, a lot of considerations back and forth about the cost-benefit of replacing fairly new equipment. But anyway, the Recreation Center is now 18 years old, so it's, time again, we'll be doing an energy audit at that facility.
Thank you. That looked like a real good spreadsheet and a lot of kind of good information, and looks like we've got a lot of these items done. Do we have any questions from council for Ms. Manwaring on the energy audit action plan? Well, thank you very much for bringing us. Do we, any more questions on sustainability? I want to thank you once again, all of you. I can't hardly see you over the chairs. We've got the big chairs down front, so thank you all for being here. Appreciate your help. Appreciate your hard work on this. Look forward to having you come back in June with a final report, and then seeing how we can put that into action, because that's where the rubber hits the road, or, you know, the tennis shoes hit the pavement. Thanks so much for being here. We, I want to go back in time if we can. We didn't get any citizen comment on any items on the agenda. Is there anyone here? And I don't have my, the sign-up sheet. Mr. Goff, if you would grab that for me, and let me see. See if we have any public comment. Okay, I don't have anybody on the list to speak, so unless there's someone that hasn't signed up that wants to speak, we will move to our next order of business, which, check these off, staff reports, good. Our annual legislative dinner. I see that we have some of our guests here tonight. Senator John, would you come up and join us? Has Ms. Danielson made it yet?
Yeah. Ms. Danielson is on her way. I believe she had some late committee meetings, but she says she's going to try to get here. She may have to, she may have to leave early.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a short recess, get our dinner, and bring it back here, and we'll have a working dinner, so let's find the food. ...back, I think, maybe waiting on Patrick, but I think one of our guests needs to depart. So I would like to, oh, I'm sorry. Good timing. Thank you. We're ready to move to our next agenda item, which is item number three, our annual legislative dinner. And I would like to welcome our guests tonight. We have with us Senator Sherri John from the Colorado State Senate and Representative Jessie Danielson from the Colorado House of Representatives. Get my government down, right? And we have with us Megan Dollar, who is with the Colorado Municipal League. So, thank you very much for being here. Ms. Lorenz has provided a memorandum and some background information. And would you like to say something tonight in opening? Okay, very good. We'll kind of move forward. Representative Danielson has another event or two or three to go to after this one, so I would like to offer her the floor if you would like to kind of bring us up to speed on what you've got going on.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, members of the council. It's really good of you to invite us here today and to the staff. I can't thank Carly enough for making sure that we got here even after a little scheduling error on our end. So I appreciate your patience tonight. My name is Jessie Danielson. I represent House District 24, which includes Wheat Ridge and then also Golden and Edgewater and some communities around there, Applewood, Lakeside, Mountain View. So, I just came tonight to kind of give you an update on the legislation that I'm carrying as a prime sponsor and then get any questions or feedback, just like we did the last couple of years. I'm not going to touch on everything because I've got a ton of stuff, but sort of the top handful of bills that I think are going to be really, really good for the folks in Jefferson County and Wheat Ridge in particular. So, for starters, as you know, there's about 40,000 veterans that live in Jefferson County and a number of them right here in Wheat Ridge. So, since I got elected, I've been doing a lot of work on behalf of the veterans community to ease their transition into civilian life, to make it easier for them to get the college degrees that they deserve and the well-paying jobs that they deserve. So, I'm running House Bill 1060, which is tax deduction for military retirees. It was in the Finance Committee last week and will be again in a couple of days. So basically, it reflects what the title describes. This is, this measure accomplishes two things. One, we're always talking about bringing or retaining a skilled workforce in the state of Colorado. And I think that attracting or retaining the veterans who serve is a great way of doing that. I can't think of a more disciplined, hardworking, honest, down-to-earth workforce than our veteran community. And I can say that with confidence from the folks I know in my community around us, my friends and neighbors, but my family members as well, who have served from World War II and all the way till currently serving. The second piece is just say thank you. Again, we often hear politicians saying we need to do more to say thanks to the veterans who serve our country, and this is a really nice way of saying, we've asked so much of you and now we're going to show our respect. So, that is House Bill 1060, tax deduction for military retirees. As some of you know, I've worked on the issue of equal pay for women in the workplace to make sure that men and women are paid equally for the same jobs. So I'm going to be bringing another measure forward this year that works to close the pay gap for men and women in the same jobs. And again, that's something that I've done for the last several years. And last year was able to actually pass a bill that made it so that you couldn't get fired for discussing your wages with your coworkers in order to advocate for yourself. So continuing our efforts on equal pay. I'm doing another crack at patient choice in the pharmacy, which, again, I ran last year. Another issue that I think folks will be interested kind of now and down the road when we look at the governor's plan on the water plan, the clean energy plan, part of this could be increasing access to electric vehicle and alternative vehicles for residential use and also for commercial use. So as you know, a lot of the fleets around the state use natural gas or are electric. Problem with the general public having access to electric vehicles is where do you charge them up? It's all good and well to say that we're going to work towards a cleaner fuel economy, a cleaner way of getting around the state, but if you can only charge your car at your house, you can't really get... you can't really get far. I know that, you know, my folks live on our farm where I grew up, it's an hour and 15 minutes from here. Just getting over the mountains to recreate, getting to work each day. So I'm going to be working on that as well. And I think those are kind of my top few measures that I wanted to talk to the group about. Again, I've got a number, but I didn't, don't want to drag on and on, especially if there is one that you had some questions about, happy to discuss it.
Thank you. Do we have, do we have questions for Representative Danielson? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Jesse, this is not your bill, but I think I heard from somebody was sponsoring a bill about municipal internet. Do you know where that is? Chris Kennedy was supposed to be doing that.
Um, I am not sure. I'm sorry, I'm looking through, I'm looking to the mayor as if he's the chair of the committee that I'm serving on right now to be recognized.
I was into my lasagna and that's a conflict of interest.
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, there, there are 65 of us in the House. And so if someone was talking about a measure that they were, they were working on with stakeholders in the background, it sounds like an important issue. I'm just not familiar with it, so you might just direct the question over to Representative Kennedy. Mostly when we're talking about internet access this year, it's about rural broadband. So I can tell you with confidence that the Democrats in the House are working really hard to pass a measure that increases access to rural broadband to make sure that our rural residents and businesses have better access to the internet services that they need to succeed. And you know that I've represented Jefferson County for some time now, but I grew up in northeastern Weld County. So a lot of these issues that face agricultural communities or the rural communities are near and dear to me, but then I think also a lot of Wheat Ridge residents, just given the rich history here and our agricultural background. So it's a nice tie, but that is a goal of ours that I hope we see through successfully.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Is he crowded tonight?
I sort of wanted to ask about transportation, not as a, as a particular piece of legislation, but I know that that is a concept and wanted to see what your, what your thoughts were on something happening either in the legislature or something, something coming perhaps to the ballot.
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I think everywhere I go, it's probably the most common question or concern amongst residents Jefferson County and honestly across the state. How are we going to pay for the existing infrastructure that needs repairing? How are we going to pay for what we need as the state grows? Concerns about population increase and the such. So what I would say is that there, there have been some credible proposals and there have been some very inadequate proposals. So, you know, when we're talking about tens or hundreds of billions of dollars that need to be invested in the state's infrastructure to bring the transportation up to speed and, and some of these proposals are, you know, five, 10, tens of millions, it's not going to do the job right. So unless we see something real coming from the Senate, and then as far as, you know, measure going to the ballot, I think that everything's on the table right now. And if we have a plausible solution that is acceptable to the voters, I just don't see how we do what we need to get done with the resources that we have. You know, it's talk, if you're going to, where are you going to take it from? You're going to take it from our schools? Because I don't know very many residents in Wheat Ridge that are interested in that. So it's a tough, tough question of how are we going to deal with what needs to be dealt with without raising additional revenue, plus the, you know, the kind of stranglehold that Tabor has on, on the state and our ability to raise revenue is pretty limited. But it is priority number one to come up with a bipartisan solution to at least most of our transportation needs and preparing for the future. So I hope we get there too.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
You had talked about this deal to make more electricity available for electric cars. And it just ties into this, so I couldn't hold myself any longer. How are we going to replace the revenue that electric cars don't contribute to maintaining the roads? I mean, if we're going to push electric cars and we're already short of money, if we put 20% of our fleet out there as electric cars are paying no gas tax, it seems to be two different concepts at odds.
Representative Danielson?
Well, I'm not sure that I see it quite as black and white. Plus, what I'm talking about is, is a longer-term goal of integrating a lot of different fuel resources, right? So alongside your traditional cars, allowing for the public to choose an electric vehicle. Or when I say alternative fuel vehicle, that also means natural gas. So I don't think it's necessarily immediately having the public reject their gasoline vehicles or their diesel vehicles. It's making it possible for down the road, for this to be a more accessible option to those who find it to be the most beneficial to either their families or their businesses in their own economic model or environmental, whichever they put forward. So I don't know that I would agree that it's that stark of a trade-off in gas tax because of the other additional investments in the community. But, you know, we can continue talking. And, and I do see the bill, what I, what my bill would do would be allow for the community to come together to request these kinds of things be built through the PUC. So it's, it's allowing for this kind of infrastructure to be built out at the request of the local communities. So it's still a more permissive measure that kind of allows for this kind of development to, to go forward, because if we just, if we don't do anything now, it won't be available. But it has to come from the grassroots and it has to go through the PUC. And if you're thinking of any other questions, I did want to just mention really briefly, our new mayor has also agreed to have, allow me to do my, my town hall meetings as, as Representative for House District 24. I do a lot of community events, happy hours, town halls, this kind of thing, coffees, to try and be accessible to the constituents that live right here in Wheat Ridge. And we've been having our town hall meetings in a different location just because before it wasn't real convenient. And so I called the mayor up to say, hey, we, we sure loved being at the city hall and if it was possible, just know that we would really appreciate that. And he kind of took a minute to think through it and, and offered it back up so that our shared constituents could come here to your city hall and have a town hall meeting. Yes, it's about the issues at the state legislature, but it always has to do with local issues and that each and every one of you is welcome to join us. And if you want a section on the agenda, you know, we open it up like in, in Golden, almost, almost every town hall that we have there, the mayor does come. So I wanted to say thank you to the mayor and, and also to you all for allowing us to be here again because it's nice to connect the state government with the city government and, and just kind of have a nice bridge back here. So, so really, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
And I'll make sure that, that you all know when the, when the dates and the times are for those meetings so that you'll be able to make that, Ms. Danielson?
And I could tell you the next one.
Oh, go ahead.
And we'll, we'll let you know because the schedule will shift a little bit and of course it has to be convenient for your team. But the next one will be February 24th at 10:00 a.m. right here. And I always bring coffee and donuts. So come and join us.
Low-calorie option. Ms. Dozen?
Could you speak to whether there's going to be any statewide initiatives to increase funding for education?
On the ballot?
Whether it be on, yeah, on the ballot? It would be a ballot initiative at that point?
So you're probably seeing what I'm seeing. So an, an, you know, a referendum initiated by the public and signatures gathered, of course, anybody can do that if they have the resources. I have heard of a couple of groups who are talking about putting forward statewide measures on the ballot. But until they're filed and accepted and all of that, they can't even go gather signatures. So you're seeing what I'm seeing.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, and for either of you, but since I know you have to go. I know there's, the feds are trying to make a lot of moves in the state also in order to provide, I've heard rumors about homeless housing on the federal center. And then also we just got a letter from our mayor that the state wants to buy the Old Ridge home and put in some kind of accessible living or something, temporary indigent living up there. Are you guys familiar with that? And are those two agencies working with local agencies to accommodate how that might impact our community?
The one thing I can tell you is I just today received a letter that they're having something on February 8th at, I believe it's at Alameda High School. And I think it's at 5:30 p.m. because we're all wanting to know the very same thing about the federal center and what that is going to look like. So I don't have a clue yet, but I'm going to try and get to the thing. And I can also let someone know in the council so that you can pass it along because it literally just came this afternoon as I was, late this afternoon as I was leaving. And then what was the second question? I have the-
Well, the state's wanting to purchase property in, in Wheat Ridge. It's up, it used to be the Ridge Home.
Now apparently you all know more about that than I do. That has not come before me, but I'm not on local government, so that could be part of it. Do you have information on that? I don't, but I would be happy to-
Do you recall what state agency that is?
Get information for you.
Which what, I'm sorry?
I can't remember, I read your letter, but what state agency was it that was running?
Oh, the Jefferson County.
Oh, Jefferson County.
Oh, Jefferson County, I was going to say nothing.
Well, the state owns the property right now, but it's in Wheat Ridge.
Yeah, has to go through legislation, a legislative process to turn the property over. It's actually with the public land or the, what's the department that disposes of state property? There's a committee or something that does that, right?
I will just tell you that Lynn Johnson from the county-
That's who's working on it.
-briefly mentioned it and she is supposed to be scheduling a meeting to catch me up, so.
There's, there's draft legislation and that potentially is going to get introduced in March or April. They, they're looking for sponsors right now. That's, that's what we know at this point.
And that would be something I'd be interested in hearing where you all, your thoughts on that.
So that's exactly what I was going to say is, that's why we come here tonight. And so I think Senator John is right about where I'm at. If and when there's legislation, we'll need to hear from you. And, and to that point, I mean, you know, Megan's here and you guys have a great team with their, the lobbying team that you've got in the building on a day-to-day basis. So that when there is something that the city of Wheat Ridge cares about in particular or if, if you know that the cities in general are either pleased with or neutral or don't care, you know, I don't hear from you a lot of un-neutral. But, but, you know, you've got a really good team that's there every day watching it and as it moves really fast, because you can't be there. I mean, then you would never be here. So I just want to thank them and, and do know that you've, you've got a great voice there. They speak up and they speak well. And it's not just in local government committee. I used to serve on that committee and now I don't and I still am so familiar with a number of the issues that you prioritize. And I serve on agriculture and public health and approach. So your team is very active and well-respected. And so when you need something, just make sure that they know that they've got to get in touch with me and I'm sure they will. Also, you guys can call me anytime and I know that you have my office number and my cell phone number. And please never, ever hesitate to use them. My email address and everything, I think you have it here. I will add though, on, if you want to write it down, my cell phone number is 720-276-3468. And you just never hesitate to give me a buzz. But like I said, you've got a great team and we depend on them.
Thank you.
And I will turn it over to Senator John. And I just want to say thanks for your time tonight.
Well, thank you very much for coming, it's a pleasure to have you. And I hope you're off to have not a very, not a very late, yes ma'am? You may.
Have either of you heard any rumblings of legislature, of legi, yeah, legislation about decreasing funds for community corrections, the admin money? I know it's, it's not a municipal issue, but Wheat Ridge is represented on the Jefferson County Community Corrections Board and I'm an officer of the state organization. And there's always that threat of decreasing the admin money. And if, if there's any, any legislation that requires education for board members, there's got to be some corresponding monies provided to the various judicial districts to provide for that.
Yes. So I'm, I'm sure that Senator John will be able to add our expertise, but what I can say probably most pressing, and you weigh in if you've got anything else to add, but we're considering the supplementals to the budget from last year, which means it's a set of bills that true up this, this year's budget for the state. And there is, there are a couple of them that have to do with Department of Corrections and the funding for the safety of the folks who run things. And there is, there are some, there's going to be discussions about how the money is prioritized. And, and I think that probably pretty soon you'll see at least a couple of the bills that have to do with exactly what you're talking about. So what would be helpful to me is, again, so that I am very clear on how you feel about it and your team, if it impacts CML or Wheat Ridge, great, even if it's you personally, I need you to let me know because we're dealing with that this week in the House.
Okay, thank you.
So great, I mean, great question and very timely.
Well, Representative Danielson, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you all.
Hope you have a nice evening.
Have a great evening and I'll see you soon.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Senator John, would you like to make some opening remarks or?
Do you know what, my remarks are very, very quick. As you know, last year I mentioned that I would be spending my last two years working on the whole addiction, substance use disorder opioid issue. And that really is where I'm spending my time. Spent the summertime out session on an interim committee where we spent hundreds of hours listening to the people that actually work in the industries, that actually work in the trenches and work with folks with the addictions and the substance use disorders. And we did come up with six bills. I have Senate Bill 24, which I had worked very hard on, actually the previous session was to expand the workforce. We all know there's a shortage in the workforce when it comes to healthcare. Well, it is especially short when it comes to those that are qualified and certified to work with the substance use folks. And so when you're talking about some of the rural areas, up where Senator Crowder is in Alamosa, there is not one, not one facility. That is a tragedy. They have the highest percentage of opiate users and the heroin users right now. It's awful. So the legislation that I worked on, actually for two years, so it was pretty simple to get it through the interim committee this year, the summer, was actually teaming up with a program that is already within the state. And that is a program that, that works with, it's a, what would you call it? It's not a loan forgiveness because they have to pay it back. So it is great rates that they get in paying those back and they are given time to do that. That program has been in place, it's the Colorado, oh, the name, they always have to name them like this, you know? But anyway, has been in place since 2009 for the physicians and nurses in the rural areas. There have been two defaults, two. Now that's a pretty darn good program. We weren't interested in starting something new. And so alls we did was tag into that so that they will be able to get their loans upfront. They have to commit to a rural area for a length of time, like three years. And then they can pay that money back. But what we're doing is bringing in more certified addiction counselors, more licensed addiction counselors. You have the CAC1s, the CAC2, CAC3, and I know more about that than I ever thought I would in my life that I ever think I would spend that much time on this. But they're just R0. It's such a shortage in the field. So that actually came out of committee with just one no vote. So I was very happy. I've been working with the Joint Budget Committee because it does have a price tag on it. But it is money that they actually will be paying back. And then there is some of those dollars that will be used as a scholarship. If you have someone that's a certified addiction counselor, level three, and they really want to get to that licensed addiction counselor, which is the next level, then there's a six-month plan that they would be able to do that. So that's the one that I have spent probably the most time on. I will tell you that there is another one out there, you've probably all heard about it. It is the one that says we will have safe injection facilities, the safe injection sites. We've not lost our minds, but let me just tell you, the bill isn't going to go anywhere. We've not lost our minds, but let me just tell you, the bill isn't going to go anywhere. More than anything this summer, we knew that this was a discussion that we absolutely needed to have. We are losing thousands of people in this country every single day to these addictions. It's a horrible thing. I will tell you that over 70% of the people that have these addictions, that have now gone from the opioids, that they were prescribed by doctors legally after an operation, legally after, you know, for a football injury, over 70% of those people are the ones that are now addicted because they did what they were told to do with the doctors. You know, you can become addicted in three days. So, many of those people have gone to the heroin because you can no longer afford the opiates. So, they go to the heroin. It's a horrible, horrible, horrible disease. So, what we know is if they're dead, you can't get them into treatment. And so, one of the areas that we worked on this summer in the interim committee, and we went ahead and put it into the bill, was a concept that's coming from other countries where they actually have a place where these folks can go, and people are like, "You are doing what? You are legally letting them shoot up their heroin in these places?" Well, let me just tell you, there's doctors there, there's nurses there. These people are getting a hold of drugs that are killing them. You are finding them in your public restrooms? Have you wondered why in so many restaurants now you have to go get a key? It's because they keep finding people overdosed in the restrooms, in the public, in the parks, our children around the schools. And so, if they can go to a facility that is monitored, they can check the drug that they're going to inject, they have a chance to get them information on treatment. So, is Colorado ready for that? Probably not. Probably not. But I will tell you, it's a conversation that should be had. There are other parts of the bill that I'm hoping that we'll be able to keep some of it. One of is the fact that we have high schools now. These kids are using. Don't kid yourself for one minute if you don't think that they're not using at Wheat Ridge, that they're not probably using at the middle school, that they're not using at Jefferson. You bet they are. Well, if you have an overdose, you better have staff that can get to them quickly, and we have Narcan for that. But they need to be trained. You know, we have our officers, and I'm sure that our officers probably carry it. Some of them? No?
We're not carrying it because we did a study with our vet on fire, and they can get their-
Well, they can then.
-time.
Okay.
But in the rural areas and larger county areas-
Yeah.
It's, it's quite expensive.
So, one of the parts of the bill is that we're asking, can we make sure that they're trained so that if something does happen, they would be able to revive very quickly? So, it's just, it's a really hard, hard issue. I will tell you that. There's probably other parts, there's only two or three parts of the bill, but don't anyone panic, but just know, it's a conversation that we need to have. Because it is, I will tell you right now, every single person in this room, every single person in this room knows someone. You may not know, you know them, but everybody knows someone that is dealing with addiction of some kind, whether it be the opiates, the heroin, the meth, or alcohol. Alcohol is still the biggest killer that we have. So, more than anything, it was to get this conversation out on the table. It was supposed to go to committee today, but it was pulled off a committee. We do not have the votes to take that forward, but as I've told the chair of the committee and the members, the discussion's going to come into committee. We're bringing in witnesses. They're doing it in other countries, but we just don't have the data to say, "We saved this many people," or "This many people that went into the clinic to safely inject, this many people went into treatment." So, when you don't have data like that, it's kind of hard to, you know, make a sell. But it's a, it is a real issue, and it is everywhere. Everywhere. So, yes.
So, can I ask you a quick question on that? I mean, I know it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of work, but some of it's on the work, unfortunately, at the end of, you know, they're already addicted type of work. I know a lot of states, and there might be some people that might look at me like, "Christy, be quiet," but some states are requiring that physicians register for the PDMP and that they start looking at that. So, I guess for folks who don't know that, it's a registry that physicians can look to see if their patients are doctor shopping, and then they know to prescribe. Like, I know a lot of emergency room physicians will look in PDMP to make sure that they weren't at St. Anthony's yesterday and they're Lutheran today. So, are there any, I mean, it's almost, it needs to start kind of at the beginning instead of trying to fix it at the end, or a little bit of both? And is there any kind of discussions?
Yes.
Because there are 13 states that require that.
We actually are doing that too with one of the bills. And I will just tell you that in Colorado, and it just, I just, I just could not believe that, that's actually federal. So, the prescription drug monitoring program is actually federal. And the doctors that I met with all said, "You know what? That's fine." And sometimes I do if I suspect someone might be doctor shopping. But you know, it's just really cumbersome, and I really don't have the time because it takes another two minutes, and I'm like, "They're dying." And so, yes, part of what we're doing is that, but the other piece that we've added, and actually, the Medical Society is on board, the doctors are on board, is that they can only do a seven-day prescription. No more of these 30 days, 60 day, 90 day, because the other thing that they were telling me was, "You know what? I'm tired of these people in my waiting room, and they're bothering my staff, and they keep calling, so I'm going to give them whatever it is they want." They're dying. And so, finally, the doctors are on board saying, "You know what? We're part of the big problem here." And so, they are looking at, and then the other thing that we're doing in one of the bills is saying, "We need to look at alternatives, folks. There's a lot of other things you can do besides take a drug. There's physical therapy, there's acupuncture. I mean, you need to be kind of expansive. You don't just have to immediately go to an opiate. It's not what you have to do." So, yeah, we're kind of covering the whole gamut. That's a really good question.
Chief Brennan.
Along with what Sherri's talking about at a state level, from a county perspective with the county Department of Health, we've been having quarterly meetings with all the law enforcement agencies in the county, with the Department of Health. We have a syringe exchange program that is pretty active within the county, nurses, doctors, counselors, going out to places where, you know, addicts are known to hang out. They're doing that at the county health offices, they're at Sixth and Parfay. And there's also a countywide committee that they're putting together based on Sherri's description of what's been going on this past summer with the task force to look at a variety of different programs. And one of those is the program that you're talking about, how we can get that in the state and do a better job of monitoring these prescriptions. So, there's a lot of work being done even locally below the state level on this whole issue. But if you didn't know, I wanted you to know what's being done countywide. Thanks.
I will just tell you, one of the best partners we've had down there has been law enforcement. They have been all over it, have just been wonderful. And then I will also tell you that last year I added into the PDMP piece, and this is just sad, and it'll break your heart, veterinarians. People are like, "Well, it's very, very unfortunate that what we were finding and what we've been finding around the country is that people are actually harming their animals so that they can come in and get the opiates, the pain medicines for their animal." It's just very, very sad. We had, you know, one lady, she just took a razor blade to her dog's leg, and the vet couldn't figure out why that dog wasn't getting, why isn't that leg healing? She kept reopening the wound so that she could get the prescription. And the doctor figured it out at the third time that the patient came in and made a call to law enforcement, and then they got her, you know, help. And, you know, it's not, the other thing that's really big for me is we have got to work on the stigma. These are not people. You know, your kids and my kids all said, "Well, I'm going to be a fireman. Well, I'm going to be an, I'm going to be a police officer. I'm going to be a teacher. I'm going to be a nurse." None of them woke up one day and said, "I'm going to be a drug addict. I'm going to be an addict." Not one of them woke up and said that. I will tell you that the stigma just breaks my heart, like these are just people beneath society. They are people you know. They're your teachers, they're your doctors, they're your lawyers. I mean, you would be amazed at the people that have come to me downstairs and closed the office door and said, "Can I just talk to you for a minute?" These are professional people that never, ever, ever intended for this to happen. So, it's how I'll spend my last year, and this will be my last legislative update with you all.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, we better get our-
You'll be free.
We'll get the most of it then. Yes, okay. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, and I appreciate you being here today. I was curious what happened with the closed-loop payment processing system for marijuana, and I understand that-
Oh, yeah, that went down today. So, this is the deal. I'm telling you, I watched these people come into the Capitol with suitcases they're wheeling behind them, and it's full of cash because that's how they have to pay their tax bill. The banks, I'm sorry, they don't want the competition. It is that simple. They did a really good job, and they have a lot of power in the building, so they did manage to snuff that bill out today. But, you know, I have to tell you, it's pretty clear that we have, you know, federally, they very well could come down, and I do believe that they're going to tell the banks, "You're done. Stop. You're not taking the money anymore." And to me, it is a huge public safety issue. Huge. Because you have people operating in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so, what we were trying to do was make, create a closed-loop system, and it's really complex, and I am not going to take anybody's time to try and figure it out because it took a long time for my brain. But it would be a way for them to be able to use a card and for them to accept, it would be almost like a credit card. The banks would be a participant because they were the ones that would actually house the money, but they just couldn't get past that somebody was going to compete with them. So, no, that bill did not make it. And, you know, I was a no on Amendment 64. Everybody, everybody knows that, but it's here, folks, and it's in the Constitution, and we darn well have got to implement it, and we've got to abide by what the Constitution says. But I think we need to do it safely, and for me to see that much cash, and I don't, we don't really have much in Wheat Ridge.
Two-five.
Yeah. Now, Edgewater, I'm telling you. It's a little bit different, but to me, it's a public safety issue.
And I guess just on a totally separate topic, what's your thoughts on the freestanding emergency room regulations, and will we see something like that come forward in this session?
There is something coming forward, and I think Senator Smallwood is carrying something, if I'm not mistaken, that I heard, I'm not on that committee, but you hear rumblings. You know, I have to tell you, people need to know what they're walking into. That's just fair. And so, I think what they're trying to do, from what I've heard, so don't quote me, is make a disclosure that people have to be informed. If you're not in one of the urgent cares, and you're really in one of those emergencies where you're going to get a $4,000, $10,000 bill, that you need to be told that so that people can make a decision of where they want to be. But yes, I have heard that that is coming through. Not seen it yet.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to ask about your sales tax reform group.
Megan, you're going to have to help me, honey. You're going to have to help me. What did we finally, because it was really, I have to tell you, God love you, home rule, folks. We have to watch out for you. We have to take care of them. It was just a really big deal, and I can't remember which one little slice we managed to come up with. It was a House bill. So, it's not completely uncommon that you don't know completely what is in the House bill, but I am carrying it once it gets to the Senate. Tell me what I'm doing.
This is a bummer because Diane Criswell at our office knows so much more than I will ever know.
Yeah, she does.
However, so what this, what this does, from what I understand, is it allows the state to put out a request for information for vendors in order to look at, and I've got my cheat sheet in front of me here, looking at address locator databases, a single point for sales tax remittance, an accurate taxability matrix, some costing options for that as well. And we are supporting that legislation, so thank you, Senator John, for working with us on that. You know, and as you all know, this has been a huge topic in the last two years. And Diane, if you need more specifics, please contact Diane, and I can give you her contact. But for us, it was always about allowing local governments to be participatory in the process and also revenue neutrality, to be perfectly frank. And so, I hope, I hope that was helpful.
Yeah. You know, the conversations that we had around that were, you know, and I don't know how much of it happens at Wheat Ridge, but when you have a contractor, it is nothing for that contractor to have to go out there and put out, get 39 different contacts with all the different cities and counties. It was, I mean, it's horrible. It's a horrible process, and there's no other state in the country that does it like Colorado does it. And so, put together an interim committee, and it's a three-year interim committee. And so, that was the one slice that they came out with so far this year after the interim was just trying to fix that. It is so cumbersome. It is, needs to be fixed. So.
Okay, some more-
And you can probably speak to that, Mr. Mayor, better than I can.
You know, I've had a lot of, I've paid a lot of taxes to a lot of different municipalities in the, in the, in the course of that, and, you know, a lot of them collect the use tax upfront, and so, you know, you just sort of, you pay it upfront, and then you pay it every, you know, every time you go in, so, but it's not really, it's not really worth your time to, or you can't afford to go back and seek a rebate on those taxes, so.
We heard that over and over.
And ultimately, it's passed on to the consumer because, you know, you've got to, you've got to cover your costs, and that's the cost of business.
Yep.
An over, an overcost of business.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about the architectural paint stewardship bill that-
That your city manager was so diligent, he was on it, I am telling you. You know, when I first voted for that, I was sorry I voted for it because I thought, "Oh, come on, seriously?" But I have to tell you, now that it's in play, when I first heard that they were going to try and repeal it, I went, "Well, that's probably a good thing because it's probably not working anyway." Well, Mr. Goff over here was very quick to point out how it really is working and how the cities are using it, how the counties are using it. And I then started the research process that I go through on bills like that, that I just really need to understand. I ended up with a stack like this of just papers, just reading and reading and reading. And I will tell you that the bill passed out of committee. I voted no because they wanted to repeal it. After all of the study and reading I did, I said, "No." You know what? I got to tell you, it's working. It's working. But I can tell you right now, it's not going to come out of the House. It may end up going out of the Senate, but it won't come out of the House. So.
I'm sorry to hear that myself because, you know, I recycle my paint. I don't mind paying that fee, and it gets you something to do with a dangerous, dangerous product.
Well, and there's so few places you can go. I mean, very few places you can go. And the other thing is, you don't have to pay, you can just take it and drop it off. Whereas, if you didn't have this program in place, you're paying $20 to $30 to go drop off, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it, yeah. Good job, Patrick.
Maybe just a little background on that. So, we pay, I think, how much did I tell you? $14,000, I think, a year, Scott? Does that sound right to Rooney Road Recycling? And that gives our residents a discount to drop off recycled materials, but it allows them to drop off paint for free. So, and I think they estimated in last year, 2017, this program that they're seeking to repeal paid about $45,000 to have the paint dropped off. So, that saved our residents that much money in Jefferson County.
But I have to tell you, it was much more interesting than even that. They recycle this paint. They recycle it and reuse this paint. So, they use it on a lot of the Habitat for Humanity projects. People can actually, there are several stores that actually will sell it. They, it's clearly marked, this is recycled paint. There's nothing wrong with it, but there's actually stores now that will sell it, and people can go buy it at a great price, less than half of what you would pay in a regular paint store. So, it really is a program, I have to tell you, that it did surprise me, and after my research, I agreed.
And if I may add, CML is absolutely opposed to the repeal, Senate Bill 45. And Morgan Cullen in our office is actually following that, and I imagine, I believe he did testify in opposition as well. So, that's something that we will certainly work to make sure continues.
Thank you. Other questions? I don't want to do it right now, but I'll do it soon. We have some more, some more questions for our senator?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you may.
Because I don't get a chance to see my city people very often. All of a sudden, there is rumbling out there that I would love to get information on, that there is a property out at the Cabelas, that we're going to put a whole new hospital out there? And I can't imagine, in the whole entire world, why we'd wipe-
I've got to, I've got to stop you right there, because it's, it's in the hearing process.
Okay.
And we are the hearing officers, and the council are the, are the judges in that matter, and we can't discuss it.
And so when will there be public-
Public, there will be a meeting in this, in this, on, on-
So I can let all the people call in my office, let them know to come when?
Yes, one week from-
February 12th.
One week from tonight.
Monday night.
Monday night, February the 12th, at 7:00 PM, right here in Council Chambers. It's set for second hearing.
At 7:00?
At 7:00, 7:00 PM. And we will take plenty of, plenty of comment from anyone who wishes to come and to speak on that.
So with that being said, obviously, it's not something they pulled out of the thin air. Got it. It is a discussion being had.
It is, it is a project that, or rezoning that is in for second hearing.
And Cheryl, you can call me and ask questions if you'd like, just, you can call me and ask questions if you'd like, or staff-
I don't know how to answer these people, I'm starting to get a ton of phone calls from Wheat Ridge residents.
We just, we just can't, we just can't discuss it because of ex parte communication.
Fair enough, fair enough. Patrick, I'll call you.
What else would we like to discuss with our senator? Or our representative from CML? Megan is here, do any other? I was curious, is Para going to get fixed this year?
Yes, I hope so.
Excellent. Oh, that's good news. Let's move right along.
So we'll move right along. I'll tell you this much, there are discussions ongoing, Kevin Ballmer in our office is working on that, he's the lead on that. If you're interested, we've got some various points that we're making our policy decisions, and based on those points derived from our policy committee. One of the big ones is being that the local government division of Para is in a lot better shape than the state side, and so we're hoping that the legislature keeps that in mind, particularly when we're discussing the potentially adding additional employer contribution for Para. And so I know that Kevin has been very vocal down at the Capitol to make sure that the employer contribution, excuse me, stays as is, while working to make the local government portion whole.
Thank you.
You know, the other thing I'll comment on is the transportation issue, because I happen to think, and I'm, you know, kind of in this world out there by myself now, but I happen to think that one of the proposals, Senate Bill 1, that the Republicans have put forward, doggone it, it needs to, it needs to be on the table, because for all the years I've been there, we have never had a fund to fund transportation. We have never had a place to draw from to fund transportation. What state in the country can say that? So the proposal, my understanding, from Senator Grant, from President Grantham, is that if we take a percent, so we're not taking money away from anybody else, the money that comes in through sales tax, if they take a percent, that hasn't been decided, they want to have a conversation at the table. If you just take a percent of that every year and put it into the transportation pot, then we will have money for roads. Otherwise, they're going to keep kicking this can down the road, just like they've been doing for the 16 years I've been there now, and I think it should definitely be something that is looked at. The only thing that I have heard is that the teachers came out screaming, because they said, "No, any money that the state has, etc., should go to education." Well, that's great, but there's also road issues that we have got to deal with. And year after year after year, we talk about this, and nothing happens. So I do believe that Senate Bill 1 is something that should be looked at, and that both sides need to come together and stop the political madness out there, because this person or that person's running for election, and get something done on transportation, and the same with Para. They need to put their swords down and come to a table in good faith and talk about it. So I happen to think that could be a very good proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Urban?
Yes. I just wanted to thank CMLA for being here, and thank Megan for providing us with the information, and just wanted to thank CMLA for all the work they do.
Thank you, and I'm happy to give more information, more overview, if you all have time, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we're, you know, we've got some time. Are there other, are there other issues that you think that we should be aware of?
Yes, because they are my issues, and I want you all to know them.
Well, of course.
Yeah, just for the record, Megan Dollar here, Legislative and Policy Advocate for the Colorado Municipal League, and I am one of four lobbyists. We all pay attention to various subjects. My subject areas are affordable housing, criminal justice, public safety, emergency management, lottery, limited gaming, special districts, just a few. And one of the big things that I definitely want to talk about with you all is affordable housing, because that's been a huge issue, and will continue to be a huge issue, and a priority issue. You did receive a printout of our Legislative Priorities pamphlet, happy to, or please feel free to grab a copy of the folded one if you're interested. So there's a couple of pieces of legislation out right now. One in particular that CML is supporting actively is Senate Bill 7, which is the continuation of the state low-income housing tax credit. That's been in effect since 2014, and has directly contributed to the development of over 4,000 affordable housing units. So it's a, it's a program that's conducted through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, CHAPA, that provides for gap funding and using, leveraging that money with federal low-income housing tax credits, and it's really been a direct benefit to our membership, and we are absolutely in support of that. And it did pass out of the Senate Finance Committee, thank you, Senator John, for your guys' vote on that, and we do expect it to get through the, through the Senate. This is a very viable program that both, you know, all municipalities, housing, affordable housing advocates, as well as developers are all in favor of, so that is definitely one I want to mention as well. Somebody did mention broadband, or something of that nature. We are supporting a couple of bills in the legislature. Kevin Ballmer in our office knows a lot more than I do on that issue, but to the extent that I can answer any questions on that, I certainly will, but he is your guy when it comes to broadband, and also his favorite subjects, beer and liquor and marijuana, so all the sins, that's where he's at. He will, he was, he's been there partnering with Senator John since the beginning, since Amendment 64, since Amendment 20, crafting policy, allowing for local opt-ins, and so that's a, that's a huge issue in his bailiwick, and, and I imagine will be throughout this session, particularly, there are some discussions that have to do with on-premise consumption and things of that nature that I know Kevin is absolutely in the thick of, particularly a beer and liquor cleaning up Senate Bill 197 as well. You'll recall, that was the, the, was it a deal? I don't know, some people call it a compromise, some people didn't, but it's cleaning up the, the bill that allowed for the sale of liquor, excuse me, of beer and liquor, particularly full-strength beer by 2019 by convenience stores, as well as grocery stores. And there are some pieces of, there are some pieces in the cleanup that we would want to be a part of as well. And then, just a couple of their priorities, we talked about the tax bill, particularly the request for information, and that's House Bill 1022, that we are supporting and following. And another issue that's really big among my purview, or within my purview, is criminal justice. Police reform, criminal justice reform, municipal courts have, has been a huge issue the last couple of years, and will again this year as well. I'm in negotiations with the American Civil Liberty, Civil ACLU, like you guys don't know, with the ACLU, trying to figure out options moving forward on some municipal court issues, particularly funding for defense counsel, as well as some other outliers. So happy to answer anything on that. And last, but not, well, actually, I do want to touch on transportation just really quickly. From, from the Lee's perspective, from what I understand, we do not have a position on Senate Bill 1. I think we are neutral on that. We are focusing a lot on the ballot, the potential ballot initiatives, and wanting to get our foot in the door earlier rather than later, particularly if it's going to be a sales tax increase on, for the state sales tax, because that's something that, as municipalities, that being one of our biggest funding sources, we need to be cognizant of. And Morgan Cullen in our office is very active in that. And then finally, I do, I would be remiss if I did not mention, and give another shout out to Senator John, opioids is a huge issue within our municipalities, and I think you heard a lot of why that is tonight, but I did want to mention that we are supporting two pieces of legislation, House Bill 1003, that provides money for substance abuse programs or transfers it, as well as Senator John's Bill, Senate Bill 24, with the, with the hope that it does incentivize the increase of behavioral health professionals in rural areas, because that's really a big issue for us. So with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you so much for having me, and I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Just dawned on me a little bit, we've kind of talked around it with the opioids and some of the other, excuse me, marijuana legislation. Is anything being done at the state level to develop any kind of metric or measurement of the impact of having passed our marijuana laws, and, and how it's impacted our, our state? I mean, I, I know that's a really general question, but I mean, you know, we, we're getting so much in tax money, but have there been offsetting costs, you know, that we're not aware of? And is, is there any effort there just to determine, you know, is it a net sum game or what?
That's a terrific question, and Kevin Ballmer in our office actually worked on, excuse me, on legislation that passed last year to provide grant funding from the Marijuana Tax Cash Fund, to go back to law enforcement agencies to fight the gray and black markets, which has really been the biggest impact from what Kevin has told me from Amendment 64, law enforcement impacts have been massive, and so there was some money that, that was put into DOLAs coffers in order to, to get us that. And my assumption is that in order to provide, to create that funding mechanism, that there was a metric, but, and I'm happy to go back and look for that. If you ask Kevin, the answer is, the impacts are massive, and the funding that the state is providing is just to drop it in the bucket of what municipalities are having to deal with, particularly on the law enforcement end.
That's true. That's true.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you for being here. My broadband questions, I'd like to go back to that in two questions, two, two sort of parts here. One is, what I'm interested in is whether or not we will get a relief from the requirement that we go to a vote of the people before we discuss having a broadband of our own. That's number one. And number two is, one of the bills contains a right of first refusal, could you explain that to me?
I would love to be able to explain that to you. So here, let me, let me touch on your first question. There has been a lot of discussion the last couple of years on the, on Senate Bill 152, which is what we're talking about, which added in the requirement that in order to, for a municipality to move forward on potential, looking at options for municipal broadband or being a partner of that, that they would need to go to a vote of the people. There's kind of, that discussion in terms of amending Senate Bill 152 has changed a little bit, and that's because there's not been one municipality where the voters have turned it down. We have 86 municipalities that have attempted to pass that, and 86 have been successful, and I think, here I have my cheat sheet, 30 counties as well, which is, which is, I think if you'd asked Kevin, and I would agree with him, is a bit of a referendum on, on our providers right now, frankly. I would agree. In terms of right of first, right of first refusal, I know just enough to be dangerous, so I'm trying to figure how far down I want to go down. Why, why don't I do this, as opposed to me attempting to, to go through that? I will get your question to Kevin Ballmer and have him give you a call to give you an idea. I mean, it's really about kind of putting the control more in the municipality and the citizens as opposed to the provider, but that's about as much as, I'm so sorry that I can't get more detailed on it for that.
Senator John?
And I will tell you that there is, in the proposal that moved forward, it came through committee, there is a piece in there that gives CenturyLink the first right of refusal, which to me, just makes no sense whatsoever, because if CenturyLink, Century Link is the one holding on to the money now, and we're having to run legislation to say, "Okay, we told you in 20, I don't know, 2012, you need to disperse those funds." They have like $58 million in this, the fund, and they still have not done it. So we told the PUC, "You need to get this done." Well, now the PUC is dragging their feet, and they haven't done it. So CenturyLink is not interested in having a lot of other providers out there doing, you know what I mean? So they should not have a first right of refusal, but you're right, it is in there, and I have talked to them, so there's got to be an amendment to take that out. That will be a fight, but I, it's just wrong. It's just wrong, but it is in there.
And if I may, I just did a little reading, so I got, so I might be able to help you. But I think it really comes down to, I think what'll be an interesting discussion for us on the municipal side is, particularly with, I think it's House Bill 1096, that's going to be up in House Transportation and Energy on Valentine's Day, will be a discussion on, so it says that as opposed to first rate of refusal, if another telecom decides to come in and wants to apply to provide service within an area, that the original telecom provider can't just say, "No," because, because the end goal is to get service within that rural area. And so I think one of the interesting things will be having some telecom providers come in, and kind of discuss why they should maintain control over a certain area when they are not providing the service. I hope that helped. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, my understanding is that the existing telecom only has to match the new telecom. So they don't have, nobody has to provide any better service. They just have to, the existing one just has to matches, match what's proposed. Isn't that right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I had, oh, I'm sorry. I had a couple of questions, sort of, and well, comments, I guess, about liquor division, and one of the issues is that when rules are made, the municipalities are woefully underrepresented on the rules, rulemaking committees, and it's, like, Kevin might be there, and the municipal clerks may send a representative, maybe another stray clerk shows up, but the clerks really all can't afford to volunteer to be on these committees, and the statement gets made, well, anybody can come and be willing to participate, but it's really hard for government employees to take time off of work to go to these rulemaking working group meetings. And what it, what it ends up being is a committee that's packed with retail people, and wholesale people, and breweries and wineries, and, you know, the wholesale people like Southern Spirits and folks like that, and it's just, it's overwhelmingly run by people who are in the industry, not, and it's kind of unfair to the clerks, because they're the folks that do all the work on licensing. So that's just kind of a comment, that I wish something could be done about that. And one example of a rule, now this didn't happen, but I'm sure it's going to come back again, and that was the issue of special event permits. And the rulemaking committee, or the LED, saying cities can't charge a fee for special event permits. Well, the local folks come in, your local Sons of Italy, or some nonprofit, nonprofit groups come in, the Rotary, the Kiwanis, whoever, Optimus, they come in and they want a special event permit to, to do this event, and the city takes all the paperwork, handles everything, examines the drawings and the documents, and, and in some, in a lot of cases, has a hearing about it. We don't anymore, we do it administratively, but there's a lot of cities that do, and then ships, ships it off to the state, and they look at it, they rubber stamp it, and, and send back the okay for the permit, and they get the big money. And they get the big money, and now they want to actually take away what money the city collects for doing all the work. And ideas like that are just bad. That's just not fair. And, I don't know, take that to who, whoever would, maybe Kevin, but it's just, that's one issue that a lot of, that clerks have, and it went away last year, they didn't reach an agreement, and, but it's, it's liable to come back. And that's just one of many issues with, that clerks have with LED, but.
That's helpful, thank you. And, and we are actually, let's see, House Bill 1096 is dealing with specifically the special event permit issue, particularly because we did have that rule that came into effect in 2012 that allowed for the special event permits. And then recently, the Attorney General's Office advised LED that that was actually not allowed, that, that there was not statutory authority for that. And so Kevin is working with Representative Matt Gray and running legislation right now, excuse me, to allow for, for municipalities to have special event permits. Clarify that.
Then last year, did that get squelched about? What's the difference between that a candidate committee can have a special event permit, but the political parties can't, or the political parties can and the candidates can't? It was, it was just a really sketchy interpretation, I thought.
Let me go back, I will not be able to speak to that specifically, I only know a little bit of the overview, but I'm gonna, I've written down your comments, and I'll, I'll get those to Kevin and make sure that he reaches out.
Okay, thank you.
Senator John.
You know, there, there's something that I would love for the city to watch and CML to watch. You know, the whole big Senate Bill 197, the big liquor bill that was supposedly the big compromise. One of the pieces, and you just mentioned it, that in 2019, it's to become, it's to go to malt liquor. There is no malt liquor license, so you have all of your little Seven Elevens, everybody that's doing the three-two now is going to automatically go to malt liquor. There is no malt liquor license, folks. You're going to have kids working the Seven Elevens, they're eighteen-year-olds, they're, you know, you have another one over here by the school, and those are literally going to be malt liquor, and there is no license for those. And I don't know, it's a fact, it's, it was just a, whatever rumors that fly through the building, but that the liquor industry does not want that touched, and they want it to just become law, where it literally just becomes in 2019 malt liquor. And I think the cities are going to have a horrible mess when it comes to where they're selling this without a, a liquor license. So I would like the city to watch that and CML.
That's SB 179.
That's trouble for me.
197.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Ms. Shaver.
Another law that I would like to see, and I would, I would think it would be so simple to pass through, to allow for nonprofit, yeah, for nonprofit organizations and, I don't know how, exactly who the entity would be, we could start with nonprofits, to be able to allow gifts of liquor to be peddled at silent auctions.
That actually is legislation that is in, this year it's being run.
Okay.
So you know that.
Okay, good.
Your wish is being granted, and probably it will go through. I don't see a problem with it.
And, and CML supporting that as well.
Good, good. Some more, just some more discussion for legislation issues. Good, good roundtable tonight. Lots of good information. Any more, any more issues? Chief.
House Bill 1314, the right to rest.
HB 1314, the right to arrest.
It's 1067 this year.
1067, I'm just, just the parrot.
Right to rest, so this is a homeless bill, just, just to make you all aware of, but it would give homeless people and jump in here and help me out with this.
I gotcha.
You know, the right to rest in public spaces. So the, the way that the bill is, is written, it really is pointed more towards people who are in socioeconomic hardship and doesn't really address the other issues that, that we see with, with homelessness, which are the addiction and the mental health issues. Doesn't touch those issues, but it, it touches on the ability of, of people to sleep in their car and not to have camping laws that would prevent people from sleeping in tents in parks, okay, or going into, to a recreation center and, and hanging out in the public areas, certainly, you know, they'd have to have paths to get in the other areas. And I, I'm going to say this, homelessness is a, a, a big issue for society to, to address, but it does take away tools that cities and law enforcement use to address citizen concerns. So this would take away the ability of, of law enforcement to, to move people out of clerkage. Would take away the ability to, you know, ask people to, to leave public places that are, you know, causing, not criminal issues, but, but issues in terms of behavior and maybe actions. And I think you all know from, from my perspective as police chief, we need to address the homelessness issue, we need to find answers to it, but I don't want to take away legitimate tools that cities can use, municipalities can use to, to address some of, some of the challenges that we, that we have there. So that, that bill is, is one that, you know, if it passes, could have major, major impacts. You see states that do have it, California is, is one, if, if you go to those states, pretty significant homelessness issues in, in public and, and law enforcement. Cities' hands are tied in terms of, of dealing with the issue. And again, it's not, it shouldn't be a law enforcement issue, it's really a society issue in terms of, of dealing with, but I'm not sure it's, it's the right direction to take at a, at a, at a first swipe. I think there needs to be broader discussion about homeless issues and what are the causes, and, and how can we address, you know, the socioeconomic issues, the mental health issues, and the addiction issues. You know, you can't, can't carve out one part of it and not, not deal with the other ones, so that's.
Yes, thank you, Chief, for bringing that up. This has been an issue that's come up the last, this is my fourth year, I think, and to be perfectly clear, CML is opposed to House Bill, I think it's 1067.
Yes.
And it's, it's been kind of a perennial issue for me the last couple of years. It's taken many versions. This year is, it, it creates certain rights and then says that a municipality, for our purposes, municipality cannot enact or enforce any ordinance that may conflict with those rights. So right to rest, right to live in their car, right to privacy in a public place, which I think could be particularly tricky, right to eat food in a public place, things of that nature. It's a really tough issue, and the Chief really outlined, one of our primary concerns with the bill is you're, you're strapping local governments by taking away opportunities for, one, us to get people to services, and two, you, the bill does not provide any funding or any opportunity for local governments to get people to those, or, excuse me, to, to get people housed. And that's really what we've testified, I've testified to the last couple of years, is this, this is a really important issue, it's a societal issue, and we need to talk about solving the problem and not strapping municipalities, because in our, you know, as you all know, we are beholden to our citizens, and that's all citizens. And, you know, this is a, this is a touchy issue, and so that's, that's, that will be one that, if I do my job correctly, Senator John won't have to deal with this. It's in the House.
It's a House bill.
It is a House bill.
All right. Well, there's two, there's two chambers in the, on the Hill, so that's good. Other discussion, questions, comments? Very good discussion. I would like to thank you all for coming. Very, very interesting and informative, and thank you, Ms. Lorenz, for putting this together for us, great packages, a lot of issues. I'm sure that our, our delegation on the Hill would love to hear from us if we have any suggestions or reviews on the issues that, or, or citizens that come to us to, to see what's going on in the legislature. These are all, all things that, you know, seem remote, but they're really, they're really down to earth and they strike home, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move down the agenda, I think we're getting there. We have our elected officials report, and I just wanted to mention that Mr. DeTulio, our treasurer, was unable to join us tonight. He was ill and did not want to come and spread that curse around, so he is not with us tonight. And so I will go, go around, Ms. Dozeman, anything tonight?
Yes, so as you know, George Pond, Kristi Davis, Patrick, and I all attended the Smart Growth Conference from February 1st through 3rd in San Francisco, California, and I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the takeaways that I had from that conference. The track that I specifically attended was talking about public and private partnerships to solve some of these community issues that we have discussed tonight, affordable housing, transportation, and I really just look forward to having some of those innovative ideas come to council and for us to discuss that moving into the neighborhood revitalization strategy, so.
Thank you.
Good things.
Mr. Pond.
I will just say that, just extend thanks to, to the, the city for, for, you know, supporting us and going and, and really kind of expanding in some of the things that I think that we're all interested in. We had a great opportunity to kind of go and follow some separate tracks and come back and talk about it. I hope that, like I said earlier, I hope that we'll have a chance to share some of the content, I certainly will, from my tracks to the, to the committee that spoke earlier tonight, and I, you know, for that matter, anyone else who's interested, but I, I thought it was a great conference and a chance for us to learn a little bit more and hopefully bring it back over the next few months.
Thank you, look forward to it. Ms. Davis.
So this is going to sound a little repetitive since we're all three sitting together. So I, I would mirror, so I went on the affordable housing track, because I keep hearing this, affordable housing, and we, we can't do this, or we can't do this, because we have to have affordable housing. So I, I really expected to hear something different than I did when the word affordable housing came up. And I think just like we see in the legislation here, is affordable housing isn't necessarily that we make sure we have, you know, that the home next to me is not at the same price as my home, and that someone could, you know, that maybe with a different income can afford that home. So that was a learning for me, because we use it in a different context sometimes here. But I think what I learned, and kind of an informal request, and kind of something to throw out to Mr. Fitzgerald, is that a lot of it is around, like, things that we're already talking about. So they're talking about affordable housing, and then within that, they're talking about ADUs, and within that, they're talking about home sharing, where like the elderly might have a large home, and they can't afford it as much as they could, so they home share, so to speak, and maybe a younger individual comes in and they have a place to live, and it's affordable, and maybe they also share in shoveling the sidewalk or pulling the weeds or doing, but, and, and then we also have the same tracks of, you know, what they talked, what we're talking about today. You know, the homelessness and affordable housing for that, and not only the homelessness and affordable housing, but how do you provide support services around that? So it's not just kind of what we were just talking about, this, the affordable housing, but the support services of mental health and addiction within that affordable housing and what's offered. So it's very interesting, a lot of it. And also, a part of that affordable housing is what people, we, we are kind of hinting around to, is Airbnb, and what kind of revenues people pull in by doing Airbnbs, which makes it affordable for them to have that home. So what kind of revenues they pull in. So it was really interesting, because affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean, you know, you can't pop the top and now it's not affordable housing. Affordable housing was, is, is done a lot of different ways. So I would almost, and again, you might have plans for it, but I'd almost like to consider, because it is a topic that keeps coming up in all these different ways, you know, twenty-five foot, ADUs, you know, Airbnbs, and, oh, the Airbnb people were there, and they said, please call us, because we've already got it set up, and, and we'll pay you taxes. So that's what they literally said in the thing, call us, we want to pay taxes. That's what they said. Isn't it what they said? They said that. They said, call us. So I think we do that, but, yeah, he gave us his phone number. Or was it the Lyft guy that gave the phone number? The Lyft dude gave the phone number, but I'll hunt the guy down. But anyways, I think that it's almost, I mean, because it's things that come up every day, it's almost like, it'd be nice maybe if, and I, I'm thinking we probably will, when we have our city council retreat or, you know, little session, that we kind of address some of these and get, you know, and maybe talk about, you know, maybe get some people in there that could, could speak to some of what affordable housing is, and, and different outlets to that, because I think, you know, I think people have in their minds affordable housing, but that's really changing. And it was just really interesting, because I walked in there thinking affordable housing means, you know, don't do this to your house, because we've got to make it a little bit less so somebody else can afford it. And, and that's really kind of what was not spoken to, but I think it was very interesting, and I think it's all things that we're trying to address as a council that would, and I'm thankful I went, thank you. That's all, and I'm rambling.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm just getting repetitive, but I just want to remind everybody again in District Three that Councilman George Pond and I are having our quarterly meeting on March 10th at Morningstar at nine thirty AM in the morning, everybody invited, it's a listening session.
Very good. Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, based on some things that came up today, it just crossed my mind, Patrick, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but it dawned on me when we were, I was talking about metrics for some of these other programs like marijuana too, but we have a significant investment over at Fruitdale, and there's tax issues and whatever going on going there. Do we, when we've made investments of that kind, do we follow, kind of follow the progress of what's happening on? And, you know, are, are they rented out, and are we seeing any, any return to the people?
Sure, yeah. Very timely question. I was emailing Mr. Jim Hartman during the break, and he, he would like to schedule a meeting, or a presentation to city council in the next couple of weeks to present the tax credit check back to the city that we loaned, a portion of the tax credits, I, I think it was like 1.6 million. If you remember, part of the deal was the city loaned money, and, and we were going to get repaid when they sold their tax credits, and they've sold them, and he would like to come give a presentation on, on the leasing of the, of the Fruitdale and, and provide the, the reimbursement check too. So I think we're looking potentially as, as soon as, as next Monday, the 12th, if that works.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine.
Just popped into my head, and if I don't do it now, I'll forget.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and obviously with CML having just presented here tonight, I just wanted to give sort of a quick box score on what's going on at the State House. And the, the CML is tracking about thirty-five bills, fifteen of which they're opposed to, and twenty that they're in favor of, and a smaller number of that, about twenty of the thirty-five are actually on the calendar and are moving forward, so you have it in your packet relative to what those items are, but really appreciate CML coming out today and giving us a lowdown on what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. N.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schaefer. Nothing from Ms. Schaefer. Mr. Goff.
Maybe just a quick update, I was going to send an email, but...
Maybe just a quick update, I was going to send an email, but I might as well do it while you're all here. We gave, this is on the Denver Water Project at the Clear Creek Crossing Project, as you all know, they're working out there very quickly, you see the crane up, you see a bunch of pipe laid on the property. They are boring under Highway 58, and they're going to be, if they haven't yet, they're going to be boring under I-70. They've asked for permission to do some 24-hour work right now under Highway 58. We've given them that permission, we didn't feel, it was pretty isolated over there, and Highway 58's not next to any residences, and we can always revoke that if we get any complaints. And we don't, we don't believe there's, the noise is going to be any louder than the interstate traffic anyway. They're going to, they're asking also for the same permission once they start doing I-70. We haven't officially given that to them yet, but that's a little bit closer to some residents and hotel. But again, we think the noise is not going to be an issue, but it'll speed the project up, it'll get them in and out of there much sooner, so I think there's some benefits of allowing them to do that. But just wanted to let you know, so if you hear anything, any complaints, please let us know, because we can address those with Denver Water and revoke that permit if need be.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things. I'd just like to thank all of the members of the Environmental Sustainability Committee for coming, for doing their work and coming and reporting to us. And I would like to thank Senator John and Senator, Representative Danielson for coming and discussing, and Ms. Lorenz for putting together a great program for us and a wonderful dinner, thank you very much. Very good to have it, and good to have it here. And then I would like to just one caution, and I know that all of the members of council are aware that we have a hearing next week, and that we are all cautioned not to engage in any ex parte communication with respect to that, and I'm sure you all are doing that. I look forward to a robust discussion and public hearing next week, and we'll let the hearing play out and see how it goes. So, but I want to thank everybody for honoring that commitment. With that, I have no more, and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.